Good morning. I call the February 18th Agenda Meeting to order. Invitation will be by George Wayne Acock, Commissioner. Pledge of Allegiance will be Commissioner Tim Harrell. Approval of the amendments. Discussion of Agenda. Do we have any adjustments?
First one is a feasibility study contract for the courthouse and jail, the old jail. Request for qualifications were sent out on November the 6th, 2024, and six packets were received and opened on the 13th. Three firms were selected and interviewed by the Facilities Committee, Oakley, Collier, Dunn, and Dalton, and Intrepid. Following the interviews, the Facilities Committee discussed the interviews and recommended that we award a contract to Intrepid.
Will this be under new business or consent?
This will be under consent.
I'm sorry, what was that, Chip?
Be under consent.
Consent.
Any questions on that one?
That's going to be 15.
Yeah. Yes, sir. And then the next one is a resolution, the next walk-on under consent also be number 16. Resolution 2025-7 in support of establishing a public defender's office in Wayne County, North Carolina. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Is that under consent as well, or?
Yeah, that'll be number 16 under consent.
Andrew and Mr. Parker's good with it?
Yes.
I haven't seen it. It's going to cost you money because you're going to have to furnish him an office.
Yeah, it's well, well spent.
We're going to have some old jail sales in a little while.
If he'll keep them out of the jail, then it'll help.
Adam Chair, is it okay if I read that resolution? Adam Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's under consent.
It's under consent.
During the meeting, we'll have to pull it out and put it under new business.
Okay, let's put it under new business, please.
Place it under new business. It would be.
It'll be 16, right?
Yep.
It'll be 16.
Yes, ma'am.
The first, the first one, number 15, explain that to us just a little bit more, please.
What's that now?
The, yeah, the walk-on, number 15.
It's, we put a bid out for studying of the renovations of the old jail into office space. A feasibility study on that building. This building is in need of some maintenance and some safety upgrades, some ADA upgrades. We're also looking at this building. And so we put out a request for qualifications. We received interest from different firms. We reviewed those firms, selected three, the facilities group, working group, interviewed those three applicants, and chose Intrepid to want to perform the work.
Okay.
Because they're architectural.
Right, right.
Intrepid is actually, the architect that works for Intrepid is the same one that worked for another firm that did our COD building when we were looking at renovating versus building new for county office building. We felt they were most qualified.
All right. Motion to approve adjusted February 18th, 2025 Agenda.
We actually do that in the meeting.
Do what?
We actually do that during the regular meeting, yeah.
Special presentation. Wayne County Hero Awards by Jay's Kitchen, employee service pens, presentation of distribution check by ABC Board General Manager, Mr. Barfoot.
Yeah.
Appointment Committee.
We do have some recommendations today.
Public hearing. We received comments on amendment to Sections 41, 50.8, and 50.12 of the Wayne County zoning ordinance to reflect changes related to the airport height of the release.
Anybody have any questions on that prior to the meeting?
Very easy. Barry already presented that to us.
Yeah. If anything came up. Yeah?
All right, unfinished business. Motion to approve the lease, what, 50 years with the United States Air Force for construction of EMS Station 12, subject to final approval by the county attorney.
What's the latest on that?
We can go over it during the meeting.
Okay, okay.
It's in open, so we'll discuss it during the meeting.
And send agenda. Budget amendments. Motion to approve hazard mitigation property lease, 445.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with budget amendment number 233. This budget amendment is to allocate funds from the hospitalization fund to various departmental budgets. The purpose is to cover employer contributions for the health savings account for eligible employees. By transferring these funds into departmental budgets, we can properly account for HSA contributions, enabling the cost to be captured when requesting reimbursement from grants and other funding sources. This adjustment ensures that the expenditure aligns with the indirect cost reporting process, facilitating accurate financial tracking and compliance.
Can I ask, how much, how much do we contribute on that hospitalization?
We contribute $800 per employee, and then if the employee starts mid-year, it is prorated.
I never realized we had that program.
It lowers our health insurance cost overall.
Do I know?
It lowers our health insurance cost overall.
I know, I'm just kind of shocked, you know, after 12 years, not even knowing we had that.
We've had it a very good while.
That's first I've heard of that. Okay.
You usually do not see a budget amendment come before you because it's all captured in our hospitalization fund. But by moving it to the departments, we're able to capture that cost and get reimbursement.
Okay.
Number 234. This is for our wellness incentive. This is to allocate funds from the hospitalization fund to cover the wellness benefit offered to employees. This is a program that incentivizes employees to be mindful of their own health. They receive $250 if they maintain their waist and weight management. We have seen a steady increase in the participation of this program since the inception in 2021. We believe its positive impacts, this positively impacts our health insurance premiums by lowering the claims cost. Number 237 is for our extension office, cooperative extension. They have received $1,000 from Ag Carolina Farm Credit to conduct a community service project. This donation will be used to purchase supplies and materials to make a soup in a jar, which will be distributed to the blessing boxes throughout Wayne County for citizens in need. Budget amendment number 238. This is from the sheriff's office from our detention center. The purpose of this budget amendment is to cover a shortfall in juvenile detention shared expense line item. Juvenile defendants cannot be housed with adult inmate population. Therefore, they must be transferred to be housed at various detention centers in the state that have been approved for juveniles. The original budget was $125,000, but expenses for this line item are unpredictable. Therefore, it is difficult to adequately budget.
Is the new jail going to have facility for juveniles?
That's right.
So that's just expense to keep on. I would think it would take a whole lot different facility to keep juveniles than it would.
It would. We looked, when we designed that jail, we looked at that, and it would require a separate facility.
Oh, okay.
And it's, you know, we didn't take that on at this time.
Okay.
Isn't that correct, Andy?
So, so you had to, kind of estimate, how much are we spending per year?
So, looking at the history, last year we spent $110,000. So, we budgeted 100 this year. We're already at $86,000. So, they're projecting around 130.
So, we may, and normally, how many, how many juveniles is this covering?
I don't have an answer to that.
We may have to think in the future of having our own facility if we're going to be farming them out, you know.
We can't build much of a building for that figure, though.
I think the estimates were, when we priced it, were in the 12 to 15 million. It's not just a housing facility, it's classroom space and library space, open space, and staff demand that. And yet our teachers.
Where's the closest one that we can send juvenile?
I do not know. I'm sure, I can find out.
It really doesn't matter.
Yeah, we actually did kind of examine it, but the staffing cost was just going to be astronomical in addition to the 12 billion to build.
We can revisit it at a future date and reprice it and reassess it, though.
Okay.
All right, moving on to budget amendment number 239. This is sheriff's office for the detention center. Purpose of this budget amendment is to cover anticipated shortfall in professional services medical line item for the Wayne County Detention Center. This line item is used to pay for monthly contract of IMS correctional health care, to provide medical staff in the detention center, as well as for medical claims to be repriced or scrubbed by a third-party vendor. This line item is also used to pay for medical treatment for inmates that must be sent to providers outside of the detention shelter. The IMS correctional health care contract is $96,781 a month, or $1,161,382 a year. Prime Health Services is the current vendor chosen to scrub medical claims. Their fee for this service is 19% of the amount that they save us on medical claims. The previous medical provider, Southern Health Partners, provided this service at a flat rate of $250 a month. This cost alone has increased from $3,000 in fiscal year 2324 to $5,800 so far in the 2425 fiscal year. Another factor in the anticipated shortfall is due to final invoices in the amount of $75,670 owed to Southern Health Partners for fiscal year 2324. There was a concern that Southern Health Partners was not providing appropriate staff per our contract. Therefore, the last couple of invoices were held until a thorough review could be provided. After this review was completed and it was learned that adequate medical coverage had been provided, we were instructed by legal counsel to pay for the remaining invoices. These were paid from the current budget allocation. And one other item that was not mentioned in the letter as a reason for the increase is due to safe keeper. We had two inmates that had excessive medical costs that were about $115,000 this year. So, that's also a reason for the increase, and they have, one is no longer in safe keeper, and one should be coming out. So, that part should decrease.
Well, I'm trying to add up all of these to find out how they came up at $350,000.
This is anticipated to get us through the end of the year as well.
I, I hear you, but I see $75,000, that's clear. I see an increase in the, the rate that they're being charged for reimbursement on medical claims. But that's going to be $10,000 at the most. So, I only see $85,000 here. Where, where do they come up with the rest to come up with 350? And I realize it's a budgeted item, but I can't quite understand why they're asking for 350.
So, the budget for the year was $1,121,000. So, it's to complete the IMS contract, as well as the increase in the safe keeper that was not anticipated, as well as the $75,000 for the invoices that we had to pay Southern Health Partners, and the increased amount of the scrubbing.
Did we not budget 1.2 or 1.3 billion annually for IMS correctional health care?
We did. That is split between the jail, and we're also using some opioid funding to cover the mat part of that contract as well. And if you recall, this all happened towards the end of the fiscal year. So, the contract had to be entered into rapidly. I don't think, you know, by the time the budget got approved, we understood the increase in the expenditures. So, we are using contingency to cover that for the remainder of the year.
I understand, but still, the, the numbers in my mind do not add up. Can you get a breakdown from the sheriff's department in regards to how they arrived at 350?
The breakdown that I have in front of me that they provided is that in order to cover April, May, and June, excuse me, March through June, they will need an additional $350,000 for the scrubbing, as well as the remainder of expenses for the safe keeper.
It was not detailed.
It is not detailed.
But that's, we know that, you have nothing to do with that. Maybe we can, again, we can ask them, can we see that information?
Sure, be glad to get that for you.
What was it last year, Angie?
We paid out $715,000.
And we're paying out how much this year?
They're anticipating $1,000, approximately $1,360,000.
$1,000,000 what?
$1,300, excuse me, $1,470,000.
For IMS?
For IMS, for bill scrubbing, for safe keeper.
That's almost doubled. Is that because of the new jail and it's larger, or?
It's just a new contract.
Just a new contract.
A new vendor. My understanding was this provider would offer better care for the inmates. More coverage hours.
Andrew, explain a little bit more detail.
So, in terms of, the first thing, when it talks about scrubbing the bills, so, under our old provider, our old provider actually scrubbed the bills, and what that means is, so, we pay, and I had to look it up real quick, under North Carolina law, it's 70% of the provider's then-current charge, or two times the Medicaid rate. So, it's, it's the lesser of those two. So, what the, what scrub means is, we get a bill for the full amount, it goes to the provider, they look up all the medical codes and everything that the provider, and then they adjust it accordingly, and scrub the bill to get it down to that rate, to make sure we're paying the right rate. So, our old provider would actually do that as part of a flat rate. When we bid this out, under the old contract, that was included. However, the new provider does not provide that service. So, we had to go find a vendor that would do that for us because it is pretty complex. So, that's part of it. The other part of it is, if you remember, we entered into this contract, and I believe it was about three months. Does that sound right? Three months, two months worth of bills?
Two months, early.
Two, two months' worth of bills that we were holding. There were concerns from the sheriff's office that we weren't getting the scheduled services from our old provider. At my request, I had them go back and actually pool surveillance and verify time cards, check the records, and we did a complete audit of the staff of our old provider and compared that to the time cards. After that review, Mr. Parker and I looked at it, and we were, we were satisfied that they had actually shown up to work and working the hours. So, absent any other information that we were provided, we told them we needed to go ahead and pay that because the evidence that we had in front of us were that they were providing the services, so.
So, we switched contracts thinking that the provider was not providing the care, but actually they were.
They were, they were showing up. I think the, the level, the quality of the care was the issue with our old provider.
It is a difference. It shows nothing working.
That's true.
And, and if you remember, when we entered into this contract, we, we told the board it was going to be a substantial increase in contract price. But when we went across the counties and saw that other counties had switched from our previous provider to a new one, this rate increase was consistent with, with that increase. So, I mean, for example, Johnson County, we went and talked to Johnson County, they faced a similar rate increase with this provider as well.
Is the sheriff satisfied with the new provider?
As far as, yes, as far as I've heard, yes. Okay. But the majority, the majority of this are those several months that we held on to those bills to, to ensure that we had, that we were satisfied that they were actually providing the hourly coverage that they were supposed to under the contract.
We felt like it was easier to get, to keep our money than try to pay them and get it back.
Well, I think few people living in the county recognize that we're having to pay these huge amounts for medical services for those attending our, or living in our jail.
And the, the third part of it is the safe keeper aspect. I mean, there's some people that we just cannot afford to keep here, I wouldn't say can't afford, that we are not capable of providing that coverage. For example, one particular inmate, he had a medication that was astronomically high, so he needs to go somewhere else. When that happens, we contact the district attorney's office, try to get that case moved as quickly as possible. If that means that either he plead, that person pleads, and then is released from custody, or even if they go into the custody of the Department of Adult Correction, at least they're not in our custody anymore. So, that was one example of what we did. The, the person had a very high pharmacy bill that we could not continue to pay. So, we contacted, and we got that case resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Because if they're incarcerated and they have insurance, the insurance still won't pay when they're incarcerated, right?
Well, now that you said that, another piece of this, Medicaid, no. So, if they're on Medicaid, no. If they're privately insured, yes. So, one, and we can come back with more information, I know the sheriff was looking at, there is a service that they can contract with, that as long as the inmates want to, the provider will come in here and actually do ACA or Obamacare, screen them for Obamacare coverage. And if they're eligible, they can go ahead and get them signed up, get that insurance, and we can actually start billing against that insurance so we're not responsible for those fees. Other counties have done that with some success. So, to answer your question, Medicaid, no, does not follow, but private insurance will, and with the Affordable Care Act, that closed that gap substantially. So, some of our inmates may actually have to qual, may qualify. We can't force them to sign up.
Right.
But, I mean, it is to their benefit. I mean, if they got out, you know, of, of custody, they would have insurance when they were released. So, that's something that the sheriff was looking at, but I'm not sure what the status of that is.
Okay.
Chair, I have one question.
Yes.
Ms. Angie, just to help me understand, since I'm still new, when I see contingency, is that unassigned fund balance, or where's that money being?
No, that's just a budgeted line, that's the money that we set aside in our budget. Every year, we have a cap that we can only budget up to 5%, which we never even get close to that. But it's just money that we set aside for reasons such as this, unexpected expenses.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Nope. All right, we're going to move on.
Are we leaving that budget amendment in, or are we, okay. You also remember, one last thing on that. That's one of your legislative goals that we've sent to the NCACC and all your legislators about that issue of people residing in our jail facility. Angie, I still would like a breakdown on that.
Okay, I'll be glad to get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to budget amendment number 246, this is for the Sheriff's Office. They've received revenues from controlled substance in the amount of 140,10, so we're appropriating that for use. The final budget amendment, number 250, comes from our soil and water conservation. This budget amendment is to appropriate funds that were awarded to the Soil and Water Department from the North Carolina Grange for the purchase of an educational soils demo tent. That's in the amount of $300. That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
All right, number nine, on motion to approve a hazard mitigation property lease for 147 and 149 Hood Drive, Goldsboro, North Carolina.
I can go over that one as well. So, this is a, these two properties, 147 and 149 Hood Drive, were Hurricane Matthew buyouts of our HMGP program. Mr. Langston lives across the street. He's at 146 Hood Drive. He reached out to us a couple of months ago about the possibility of leasing the property across the street. He indicated that some people are visiting in the property, hanging out over there, so all he wants to do is be able to mow it, maybe just put up no trespassing signs, anything like that. That would keep us from having to keep it up, from maintain it, and if we move forward today, there, he wouldn't pay for the lease, but the consideration would be his upkeep of the lease, and he would be subject to all the hurricane, or all the HMGP restrictions, so he wouldn't be able to build or anything like that. So, basically, just leaving it as open space.
Good, good deal for everybody.
Thank you.
Number 10, motion to approve the final plat for Sean Pierce subdivision. Your great, our good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, this is a final plat for Sean Pierce subdivision. This plat will show you there are seven lots that are proposed on NC Highway 581 North. It's just south of the intersection with 222. There are, as I said, seven lots. The minimum, or the average lot size, is about half an acre, so about 24,000 square feet or so in lot size there. DOT has reviewed and will allow shared driveways there. Of course, with the odd number, one of them will have its own driveway. There is a fire hydrant that's been installed as well, so all lots would be within 500 feet of a fire hydrant, and the planning board has reviewed the request and does recommend approval.
Any questions, Sir Barry?
That looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry?
Number 11, motion to adopt resolution 2025-5, the resolution adopting the 50th amendment to the position classification and pay plan for Wayne County.
Morning. These recommended changes are title changes only, recommended by the director, vetted by staff and HR, and recommended for approval. It's no change in position count or additional monies, just administrative title changes. Any questions?
Why do we change titles, I mean, like this, I mean?
To be more reflective of the work that's being done. Some titles are outdated or have been part of the Office of State Human Resources, and we're not required to keep those titles any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12, motion to approve the final upset bid for the sale of the county-owned property located at the corner Gordon Street and Oliver Street, pursuant to division of NCGS 168, 269 Bobby Dinning Properties.
These are two properties in Mount Olive. Several meetings ago, you all approved an initial offer on this. We went out for upset bid, we advertised for upset bid and notified the adjoining property owners. We received one upset bid from Bobby Dinning Properties in an amount of $3,200. We went back in the paper, advertised that one, that bid, and then we didn't receive any upset bids, so we needed to bring that back to you for your approval, and then upon your approval today, it will be sent to the town council for their concurrence.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Number 14. Number 13, motion to approve the new lease agreement with the NC Department of Adult Correction for 209 West Bruce Street, Goldsboro.
It's a county's responsibility to provide those office spaces for probation and parole, and this is a routine rental lease agreement between the county and the state for that office space. I think it's for $1, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
So, we're still responsible for maintenance and?
Absolutely.
Upkeep and so forth. $1. Hard to get money from the state, isn't it? That's a good deal.
Yeah.
For them.
Okay.
Right, number 14, motion to adopt resolution 2025-6, the resolution recognizing and approving of the Wayne County Official American 250 NC Committee.
Carol, do you know anything about that? Okay, Ms. Barbara, you brought it to the board, that's right.
That's the one we talked about, that was approved.
This is basically a resolution recognizing and approving America 250, which is the 250th birthday of the United States, and it's a group that will work with the nationwide committees, if you will, to make certain it's a big deal.
Things sure have changed in 250 years, haven't they?
All right, Adam. Number 15.
Well, we already went over that one. That was the awarding of architectural services to Intrepid.
All right, number 16, new business. Motion to approve naming of the roads within Wayne County Business Campus to Industry Avenue and Ray Mayo Way.
Do you want to add anything to that?
So, if you remember, this property, this is our new business campus, it was under an option to purchase from WCDAs, which they subsequently assigned to the county, and then we, we bought the property. When the property was first, when the cyclone was first put together, WCDAs proposed two names. One was Industry Avenue, and then the other one was Ray Mayo Way, in honor of the late Ray Mayo, who was very active with WCDAs and existing industry in the area. So, we're in the process of finalizing this, this plat for recording, and when I was reviewing it and speaking with the surveyor, I realized that while WCDAs approved this, you as the owners did not formally approve the naming of the road. So, I wanted to bring that in front of you, so you could approve those two. We can go ahead and finalize that plat, get it recorded, and then the next steps would be our restrictive covenants for the area, and then start selling all these properties.
So, we're not recording the restrictive covenants at the time that we've?
No, because the restrictive covenants actually need to reference the plat that's recorded to reference everything, so we were waiting until this got finalized, until we did it.
And you're also creating a homeowners association?
There is, yeah.
For maintenance.
There is. And, I mean, that, that should be just a couple meetings away, we should be able to move on that, but in short, the way that that works is, each owner is responsible for their prorated portion of the maintenance cost based off acreage. We thought that would be the fairest way to go about it, so.
Good.
And right now, it's all owned by the county, so unfortunately, we're 100% responsible, but hopefully, that'll change soon.
Has the sign been changed yet?
We don't have a sign on site yet. We've got to get that ordered. That was part of WCDAs project management, and it's falling out right now, so we'll have to get a sign ordered, permanent sign. There is a sign, a temporary sign, but not a permanent one.
It's not worded right, though.
No. That's not the final product.
Thank you, Andrew.
Then you have number, resolution, the next one is resolution 2025-7 for the public defenders, resolution, and Commissioner Williams wants to read that. Any other questions on that? No, that'd be county managers' report, then Board of Commissioners committee reports, and then closed session. Do we have anything for closed session? We do not have anything for closed session today.
Okay.
Yet.
Yet, correct.
Have a break and have a closed session.
Right. And then we'll also, you have the Farm Bureau luncheon at 12:00 PM, and then you'll adjourn from the Farm Bureau luncheon. So, if you want to, you know, take a break, we can take a break.
Yes. Good morning.
Have to recess.
Yeah. We're going recess to 9 o'clock.
I call to order the February 18th Board meeting. The indication will be Commissioner Wayne Acoff.
Bow your heads, please. Dear heaven and father, thank you for all your many blessings. It just gives this board the wisdom and the knowledge to run the affairs of Wayne County, the citizens, and for the employees of the county. We also ask that you be with our state leaders as they conduct business for the state that reflects a lot back to the counties. We ask that you be with our leaders in Washington. This country is living in a crazy time right now. We just ask that you lead and guide our leaders to do what's best for the citizens of the nation regardless of what party, what race, whatever. We're all God's children. Also, we'd like to remember Commissioner Chris Gurley's family as they mourned in the loss of their dad. Mr. Eric was a fine man, and there's gonna be a difficult time for him because they've relied on him a lot. Also, we ask that you be with our first responders regardless of whether it's law enforcement, EMS, fire. All of our first responders, they've got a very dangerous job now. And also our 911 call takers and dispatchers. And also, we live in a military community. We ask your blessings on all of our men and women in uniform and especially our neighbors here at Seymour Johnson West. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Please stand and pledge allegiance, Commissioner Carroll, to set a pledge.
Join us in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve February 4th, 2025 minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor to approve? Thank you, Mr. Dodger. Motion to approve the adjusted February 18th agenda.
Have a count on it, though.
Do what?
We don't have a count on the other one yet, do we?
Just did.
Madam Chair, I do have two adjustments for the agenda. One is a walk-on under consent. It would be item number 15 now. It would be request award feasibility study contract for the courthouse and jail to intrepid architects. That would be number 15. And number, under new business, new number 17 is a resolution 2025-7 in support of establishing a public defender's office in Wayne County, North Carolina. Those are two adjustments. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor? All right, Mr. Grunfle.
Under special presentations, this presentation of the Wayne County Hero Award by Jay's Kitchen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just under a year ago, we partnered with Jay's Kitchen, and Jay sponsored Jay's Hero of the Month. And it's been a wonderful collaboration with Jay's. Over that time, we had learned that Wayne County is filled with heroes. In fact, we're surrounded by them. From the library to veteran services, facilities, cooperative extension, we are so fortunate to have heroes in our midst. But sometimes heroes are in the background, and they work quietly to get the job done, not looking for any recognition. So this time, I would like to invite Kim Maguire, Director of Social Services, to come up and help us introduce this month's hero.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, you guys. All right, I'm taking my glasses off, I'm getting a little old. So, ladies and gentlemen, today we gather to celebrate an extraordinary milestone in the life of an extraordinary person. A career that has spanned half a century and touched countless lives. As Mr. Borden Parker prepares to retire, I'm honored to reflect on not just his vast accomplishments, but also on the profound impact he has had on our community and the lives of so many vulnerable individuals. Fifty years ago today, Mr. Borden Parker began his career with Wayne County. He was fueled with compassion, commitment, and unwavering belief in justice. Throughout the decades, he has been a steadfast advocate for children and adults in need. With unwavering dedication, he has fought diligently for justice and support for those who have often had no voice. In a world where children are abused, neglected, and dependent, or disabled adults who are abused, neglected, or exploited, or children who are not receiving the financial assistance from the non-custodial parents, he has been a beacon of hope, guiding families through some of their most difficult times, and also being a tireless champion for those whose voices often go unheard. Mr. Borden Parker's expertise and commitment have made a difference beyond measure. Each case taken, each child and adult protected, and each family supported stands as a testament to his passion for the justice in humanity. Each case was a personal mission that showcased his dedication to justice and the well-being of others. So in 50 years, over 2,700 children have entered foster care. You have assisted in providing permanence of either custody or guardianship to over 1,400 children and have assisted in over 400 adoptions. In 50 years, over 500 disabled adults have been under the guardianship of DSS, allowing for DSS to be a decision-maker and advocate for disabled adults, and DSS is able to assist in making financial, medical, and daily life decisions. In 50 years, you have assisted in providing financial assistance through child support for over 144,000 children. As Mr. Borden Parker embarks on his new chapter of life, we want you to know how deeply grateful we are for your many years of service. You are not only fulfilling your professional duties, but you have also demonstrated what it means to care for us and your community. So here's to you, Mr. Borden Parker. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and adventures that await you. You've earned every moment, and while you may be stepping away from a role, the legacy you leave behind will endure. Thank you for your service, your wisdom, your compassion, your chocolate, your southern charm, and mostly, thank you for just being you. You have set a standard that inspires all of us to strive for excellence in our own work. So can I have child supports then? Can I have my adult services then? And then all my children's services? As I stand with them today, on behalf of the Wayne County Department of Social Services and all the families you have impacted along the way, congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. So I'll present to you today a 50 years of excellent service, where we hereby recognize Attorney Borden Parker for 50 years of unwavering dedication, tireless commitment, and exceptional service in representing Wayne County Department of Social Services and the children and adults of Wayne County. Congratulations on your retirement.
Appreciate it. You said many nice things. Good to be able to work with you.
Thank you. We appreciate everything.
You also received the Jay's Kitchen Hero Award, but I don't think they're here unless they're out in the hallway and can't get in, but we'll make sure that you get that as soon as possible.
Item number four is our employee service pins.
When I call your name, if you will, please stand up here. We'll get a group picture afterwards, and I'm gonna call the names as quickly as possible because we've got a large crowd today. Starting with our one-year pins, we have Davida Worrell Yelverton from Facility Services, Siney Diaz from Public Health, Elizabeth Edmonds from EMS, Harry McLaren from the landfill, Shia Musgrave Detention Center, Faith Mooreing EMS, Felicia Kelly EMS, Brenda Sanchez Lorenzo Public Health, Orhe Calderon Facility Services, Michael Lane Detention Center, Angela Walker Detention Center. That concludes our one-year service pins. All right, and now we'll begin with our five-year service pins. Antonio Torres Facility Services, Stephen Hennett Detention Center, Martin Bales Sheriff's Office, and Aleah Hassel Detention Center. Well, thank you, Antonio, for being here. All right, and next we'll move on to our 10-year recipients. All right, and we will begin with Maurice Harden Detention Center, Remarco Atkinson School Resource Officer, CJ Weaver Sheriff's Office, Nicholas Sullivan Board of Elections, Danielle Pope Finance, Lisa Weston Services on Aging, and Michael O'Brien with the landfill. That does conclude our 10-year service pins, and we have a 120-year service pin, and that goes to Mr. David Howell Facility Services. All right, and then our final recognition today is 50 years of service, County Attorney, Mr. E.B. Borden Parker.
This is presented to Commissioner Parker, and this is a flag, a presentation flag, that was flown over to Wayne County Courthouse in honor of your 50 years of service to the citizens of Wayne County.
I'm glad you presented it to me instead of my family at my death.
David, if you guys can come down just a little bit to make sure we get in, and what I'm gonna have you do is look up at the camera that has the green light, and as soon as Joel gives me the all-clear, then we know that he has a picture of you. And hopefully, the all-clear? Got it. Thank you, y'all.
It's a good sign when you have that many pins given out for that many years.
Yeah.
Two fish.
Follow all that, I'm sorry.
Get me a bottle of water.
Room cleared out.
They made room for you.
I thought they were all here for this tip, but I guess not.
All righty. Now, moving along to number five is a presentation of a distribution check by ABC Board General Manager Darnay Barefoot.
Morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well.
Good morning.
Mr. Borden, I want to thank you for the two years I've been able to work with you. It hasn't been 50, but the last two years have been wonderful. And congratulations on your feat of 50 years and serving Wayne County so well. If it's been like the last two years, I know it's been wonderful, because it's been a great experience for me working with you and me being a part of able to work with you. Thank you. This morning, I'd like to present to the county their quarterly distribution for $121,000. We want to keep doing this and keep doing it up. We like bringing the county money.
We like you, too.
We like bringing the city money, and we like being able to make money to do programs in our county also besides funding county commission money and city. Anyway, I'd like to present this to you, and won't say a whole lot more, but I would like to invite each one of the Commissioners by the office. I don't know that we've been by, come by, and we'll give you a little tour, show you what goes on day to day. There's a lot of moving parts that people don't realize go on inside the Wayne County ABC Board. And so I invite everybody to come by. But yeah, this time, I'll present the $121,000 and sign it.
Yeah, make sure you sign that check now.
Yeah. And I'll pass this right to the...
If we could get you all to stand up in front so we can get a picture. Thank you.
You want us to come down there or just stand?
Y'all can just stand right there, and it'll be in the frame.
Just look up at the...
Thank you. Thank you for all y'all do.
Up there at the red light.
He got it.
Thank y'all.
Long as you keep bringing them checks, we don't care whether your photo is good.
I remember that. Let's keep the money coming, right? All right, thank y'all for everything.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Who is your office?
It's not...
Who is your office?
It's now time for your appointment committee. Okay. Madam Chair, we will bring to you for consideration for our next meeting to reappoint Sheriff Larry Pierce, Maria Santa Bandez, Haiti Coto, and Elizabeth Ochoa to the Latino Council. So at our next meeting, we will be voting on that.
Okay.
And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Dodger.
Since it's not quite 9:30, we'll move on down to unfinished business. Bush has been approved a lease for up to 50 years with the United States Air Force for construction of EMS Station 12, subject to final approval by the county attorney. Andrew is here for any questions or discussion.
So we did a little presentation, Dave and I put it together. This was on for approval. Staff has been working on for, I would say, a couple of years. They've been working on response times for the base, but this has been a long project. It's certainly not over, but we wanted to go over it in more detail today. Over the last five, six, seven months, we've been in negotiations with the base to lease some property, one acre on Elm Street, the purpose of which would be to provide services what's covered right now by District Six or EMS Station Six to the southern part of the city of Goldsboro. It's one of the busiest stations in the city, and by leasing this, we will provide better services to the southern part of the city, but also improve response times on base. So I'll let Dave start, and then I'll go over on some of the lease details.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You can see up here our call volume for last year, around 23,000 calls, and as we discussed previously, 50% of our calls are come out of three of our major stations, that Station Four, Five, and Six. As Andrew discussed, the proposed Station 12 would cut into two districts. We'll talk about that in a moment. The location of these city stations are on John Street, Madison Avenue, and New Hope Road. And Station Six, why we need to really decrease the call volume there is, one, it decreases response times to the districts we're gonna talk about in a moment, and, two, the staff that works out of these stations, there's a lot of wear and tear with the continuous high call volume, so that would decrease that as well. We are looking at getting this whole process. There's been a lot of moving parts, like Andrew said. We pretty much have everything in place, and it's time to really start getting the ground broken and getting our station built at that point. So I'm gonna go over to our heat map here and give you an idea a little bit more. So this is what we're looking at here. I'm a big fan of heat maps. It shows us exactly where our call volume is without compromising individual residents. And so these heat maps represent the past 180 days for our call volume. We can see the blue dots represent our three city stations that exist right now. Over here to the left, this is our John Street. Directly in the middle is Madison Avenue, and over on the right side is our New Hope Station. Red dot represents our proposed station for Station 12, and you can see the district's changes that would happen there. Blue line represents what Station Six is going to now, and the red line also represents what Station Six is going to now. So when we put Station 12 into it, the Station 12 would pick up call volume for Station Six and Station Four. When we go over to the right side of the screen, we can see some of the demographics that exist for that. In 2024, Medic Six responded to 4,500 calls, Medic Four 3,500 calls, Medic Five 2,800 calls. And then in parentheses, that was our average response times coming out of that district. So considering that they're as busy as they are, that's pretty good that we're still meeting those response times. The blue is gonna represent what change we expect when we build Station 12. So Station 12 would then take over 37% of the calls from Station Six, 25% of calls from Station Four, and what this would equal out to is it would normalize the call volume within this city. So we'd ultimately have four stations responding out of the city. We'd see a significant decrease in response times.
Who is your office?
It's not.
Who is your office?
It's, uh, now time for your appointment committee.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, uh, we will bring to you for consideration for our next meeting to reappoint Sheriff Larry Pierce, Maria Santa Bandez, uh, Hady Coto, and Elizabeth Ochoa to the Latino Council. So at our next meeting, we will be voting on that.
Okay.
And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Dodger.
Since it's not quite 9:30, we'll move on down to unfinished business. Bush to approve a lease for up to 50 years with the United States Air Force for construction of EMS Station 12, subject to final approval by the county attorney. Andrew is here for any questions or discussion.
So we did a, um, a little presentation, Dave and I put it together. This was on for approval. Um, staff has been working for, on for, I would say, a couple of years. They've been working on response times for the base, but this has been a long project. Um, it's certainly not over, but we wanted to go over it in more detail today. Um, over the last five, six, seven months, we've been in negotiations with the base, um, to lease some property, one acre on Elm Street, the purpose of which would be to, um, provide services, what's covered right now by District Six or EMS Station Six, to the southern part of the city of Goldsboro, Goldsboro. Um, it's one of the busiest stations in the city. Um, and by leasing this, uh, we will provide better services to the southern part of the city, but also improve, uh, response times on base. So I'll let Dave start and then I'll go over on some of the lease details.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, you can see up here our call volume, uh, for last year around 23,000 calls. And as we discussed previously, 50% of our calls are come out of, uh, three of our major stations. That's Station Four, Five, and Six. As Andrew discussed, the proposed Station 12 would cut into two districts. We'll talk about that in a moment. Uh, the location of these city, uh, stations are on John Street, Madison Avenue, and New Hope Road. And, uh, Station Six, why we need to really decrease the call volume there is, one, it decreases response times to the districts we're going to talk about in a moment. Uh, and two, uh, the staff that works out of these stations, there's a lot of wear and tear with the continuous high call volume. So that would decrease that as well. We are looking at getting this whole process. There's been a lot of moving parts, like Andrew said. Uh, we pretty much have everything in place and it's time to really start, uh, getting the ground, uh, broken and getting our station built at that point. So, uh, I'm going to go over to our heat map here and give you an idea a little bit more. So that, this is what we're looking at here. I'm a big fan of heat maps. It shows us exactly where our call volume is without compromising individual residents. And so these heat maps represent the past 180 days for our call volume. We can see the blue dots represent our three city stations that exist right now. Over here to the left, uh, this is our John Street. Directly in the middle is Madison Avenue and over on the right side is our New Hope Station. Red dot represents our proposed station for Station 12. And you can see the districts, uh, changes that would happen there. Blue line represents what, uh, Station Six is going to now. And the red line also represent what, what Station Six is going to now. So when we put Station 12 into it, the Station 12 would pick up call volume for Station Six and Station Four. When you go over to the right side of the screen, we can see some of the demographics that exist for that. And 2024 Medic Six responded to 4,500 calls. Medic Four, 3,500 calls. Medic Five, 2,800 calls. And then in parentheses, that was our average response times coming out of that district. So considering that they're as busy as they are, that's pretty good that we're still meeting those response times. The blue is going to represent what change we expect when we build Station 12. So Station 12 would then take over 37% of the calls from Station Six, 25% of calls from Station Four. And what this would equal out to is it would normalize the call volume within this city. So we'd ultimately have four stations responding out of the city. We'd see a significant decrease in response times. And then we would see our city stations having, um, responses that are a little bit more reasonable with one another. The bottom stations you see are Station Two, that's out of Rosewood, Station Eight out of Dudley, Station Nine out of Mount Olive. Those are our next three busiest stations. So you'd see it put everybody in line with one another. Questions about the response times?
Dave, I just want to thank you and Andrew and the, and, uh, staff for moving forward with this. You know, it was a kind of a off-the-wall idea, you know, we knew we needed a station down there, but, uh, there wasn't any property available. And, uh, and we had a, I guess, a, a brain urge and said, you know, it's plenty, plenty of property on there. It just don't belong to the county. It belongs to the, to the federal government. And, uh, y'all got right on top of it and, and, you know, all they could say was yes or no. Well, so far, far as I know, they have been very cooperative in, in working with us. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, that new station, uh, that are near the main entrance to the base. Again, thank, thank all of you that's been involved.
Yes, sir. Yeah, uh, we've talked about it in the past that this is a hard station to build. Reality, this has been a fun station to build because of all the roadblocks that should be in place for this station. Everybody's worked together on it. So when we hit a roadblock, we'd all get together, figure out exactly how we're going to navigate around it. So I, I mean, I think that, that creates a fun environment for, for building something that should be so difficult. So, uh, Mr. Parker and Andrew have been huge as far as making this process happen.
And, you know, we did have a kind of a backup plan, but it was, it's, the backup plan was not near as good as this plan. It was, uh, it would, it would have put a station basically close to in the right place, but it ju, it would just been too far from the base. But, uh, just again, everybody's been involved. I just, I, you know, me being a first responder for many, many years, it's, uh, anytime we can add to, uh, fire or EMS, it, it, you know, it kind of gives me a tug on my heartstrings. So, but thank y'all for, for what you've done.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, just on that note, it's really a focused on the base, but you can see this is picking up a huge area. This is picking up a high call volume at Berkeley as well as a high call volume down on Elm Street as well. So this covers a huge area.
Well, thank you. I would also like to, you remember your federal legislators who have made this possible, uh, with either, you know, with direct support of this project.
So one thing that I'll, I'll go back to, um, that fourth bullet point, third and fourth. So you're actually running, the days people are running an EMS 12 right now, they're running an extra truck during peak hours. And I think he said in his budget, he told me that truck is going to be full-time. He's proposing it full-time. So you're already running what will be EMS 12, so we really need that station. I just pointed that out. In terms of the project, we've gone over some of this. We've been working with, um, Seymour Johnson leadership for quite some time. I know you Commissioners have met with them on base as well. We've discussed this, I believe that was eight, nine months ago when we first started this process. Um, unfortunately, since it is the federal government and its Department of Defense land, there's a lot of approvals that go into it. So all that has been going non-stop in the background. Um, and we're finally at a point to, um, to approve it. Um, as you said, splitting up would, um, improve the response times. So there was two possibilities we looked at. One was this lease, so it would actually be adjoining the, um, visitor center on base. We looked at that. We also looked at Meadow Lane Elementary, so the county actually owns that property. And we looked at putting a base. If you're looking at Meadow Lane, it's to the right, so where old Meadow Lane was. Um, that was also a possibility. That's not ideal because, uh, Mr. Acock, as you said, it's a little bit too far away from the main base. Um, so how it's structured now, we did look at providing secure access to the fence, um, but that was just going to be too complicated. So, um, as it stands now, there's going to be a fence, it's going to be perimetered off, and then EMS would still get on the base if needed via the front entrance, um, like they always do, but they would just be that much closer. Um, so it's determined to go with this lease option. Let me show you a map. I think you've seen this before, but this is just a preliminary map that we put together. You can see over here, that's the visitor center over to your right. Um, and this is roughly what it would look like right now. Um, so the first step would be to go in there, um, get that fence, uh, removed, taken down, um, and then get a secure area because you can't do construction on the base without it being secured. Um, so that's a, just a preliminary map. Uh, just a overall summary of the lease. Um, like we said, it would be on Elm Street, it would be on One Acre. It's a 25-year lease with a 25, um, option to renew. Obviously, we would anticipate renewing this without any concerns. It mirrors what the city, um, undertook with the Bryan Sports Complex. It's very similar. The template for the lease is almost identical. There'd be no compensation that we would have to pay the federal government. So our consideration would be operating the, the station right there. With the city, the way that it's structured, um, theirs required them to make improvements. I think, I think there was a gym and some other facilities. We don't have to do any of that. It's basically our commitment to operate this station. Um, and there's no commitment to response times on base or anything of that nature. It's just actually committing, um, to the operation. Uh, we would pay for relocation of perimeter fence as well as the construction. Um, and then, as I stated, EMS trucks would enter through the main gate. Um, and then just a little bit of background, now the, the money part of it. Um, and as your manager said, Tom Tillis's Office Center, Tillis's Office and his people were very instrumental in helping us get this grant. Um, it's a community project funding grant, it's a HUD grant. Um, and a little, we got, uh, a little over $2 million. And this program, they're congressionally directed funds that provide investment in a wide variety of economic and community development, um, specifically emergency services to citizens. So, um, once Senator Tillis's Office saw the increased services that this was, that this was going to provide to the citizens of Goldsboro, um, that it was a no-brainer. So they were, uh, working with us throughout the whole process. Um, and just a, a project timeline in addition to the grant. So in July of 2023, we submitted application for the grant. Grant, uh, period awarded in spring of last year. We were officially awarded in May of last year. Um, and then there is an environmental assess, uh, assessment that needed to be completed. We went ahead and started that process. That's probably the most lengthy process, um, and that's been going, um, underway now. Uh, one of our own call engineers, CDM Smith, is doing that environmental assessment right now. We anticipate that, I think, to be done sometime soon, maybe, uh, next month or, um, this spring at the latest. So as I stated before, August through January, we've been coordinating the lease with Seymour Johnson. That entailed meeting with, um, leadership on base. Um, it being sent to their legal department and the various civil, uh, engineering departments through, throughout the Air Force. You all approved the grant administration contract to insight planning and development. That was done, um, earlier this month, that's your last meeting. And the reason why that's important is we don't have anybody on staff, um, that specializes in HUD grants. Um, as you know, with the Rolling Wood Project, there's a lot of, um, policies and procedures that are in place in terms of documentation to the federal government. So bring in, and that, that, this will be covered by the grant. All these expenses are, the grant administrator is covered by the grant. Um, so that's important. Um, and I think we have a kickoff meeting with them tomorrow afternoon.
Supposedly so.
Yeah, um, so, oh, well, with the.
Weather.
Weather, yeah, so we'll see about that. Um, but one is going to be scheduled so we can get going. Um, and then today we have the Board of Commissioners approving the lease. Um, we have the kickoff, like I said, with the grant administrator. Uh, hopefully finalize the assessment within next month or two. And then, um, later this spring, early summer, begin the design process and procurement of the fence location. That would be our first step to go ahead and get that done and get that approved by the base. Um, and then this summer, we can start designing procurement for, um, a contractor. And I believe right now the, the plan is still do design-build, um, so that way we can move forward. So you have, you hire a contractor who, um, can design it themselves and move forward with construction. I think that's all we had, but, um, it's been a long process, but we're here today, ready to proceed with that lease. It's the first step of, well, probably this 10th step, step of about of 100 that we're going through. But it's a exciting day, so.
Andrew, I'd just like to make a comment. Uh, you know, we met with, uh, one of the base commanders, which is no longer here now. And we were, we were in discussion and we were, we were in a building on base. And we were discussing several different issues, but they are, they were concerned about the response time on base. And, uh, they, their figures didn't match ours and ours was more in line than what it should have been. But, you know, we, we didn't want to argue with them. So we, uh, we discussed it and all. And, uh, this Colonel, uh, really, really didn't know the background on, on, uh, EMS service for the base. Uh, she made the statement that, uh, when the, when the county took over EMS service on the base, and I forgot what else she said. And I reminded her, the base used to have their own EMS. And I reminded her, the county didn't take over EMS on the base. The base didn't have any, they did away with their EMS. And the county had no choice because those, those, our men on base and the civil service employees, they're part of Wayne County. So Wayne County had no choice but to, to start going on base. But, and she kind of looked like, you know, she was kind of surprised because apparently she didn't realize that the base at one time had their own EMS service. But, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's going to come together with, with y'all's help and all and, and your hard work on it, you and Dave and, and, and staff. It's, uh, it's, uh, anytime we can add to our first responders in Wayne County, it means, it means a lot to me. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, once we get started with the groundbreaking, how, how long do we anticipate the construction process?
Less than, I wouldn't, I'd probably say for that type of facility, eight, eight to 12 months at the most. I don't see it taking longer than that. It may even be shorter than that for the type of building that's going to be built. Now, it's going to be a little, uh, more, it's going to be fancier than the EMS stations we build in the county because of the requirements, uh, well, for one, where it's located and two, the city's requirements for the way it looks. But, uh, it shouldn't add that much time to it.
That's pretty quick.
Should be a quick turnaround.
It's pretty quick.
I think this is the time-consuming part right now.
Okay.
We also, I didn't include on the timeline, Dave had mentioned it to me. He plans to take, um, possession of, um, our new EM, uh, ambulances later this spring as well. And those were also procured with federal grants. So we're building, um, an EMS station on federal property with a federal grant that's going to be funded or provided services with federally funded ambulances, so. Kind of unique, very unique.
Good job, guys.
So just to close, I, I went to the HUD office yesterday and knocked on the door just to remind them that Wayne County is here. Uh, they wouldn't let me in, um, but I did knock on the door, so they know we're here. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve, uh, a lease for up to 50 years with the United States Air Force for construction of EMS Station 12, subject to approval of the county attorney.
Motion on the floor to approve 50-year lease, construction of EMS Station 12. Question, pass, five to one.
Okay, uh, you move on to your 9:30. Uh, it's a little bit after 9:30, but your public hearing to receive public comments on a amendment to sections 41, dot 50, dot 8, and 50, dot 12 of the Wayne County zoning ordinance to reflect changes related to the airport height overlays. And the board may choose to take action following the public hearing. Barry is here to explain.
All right, good morning. This, um, I believe I've been over this before, but I want to go over briefly again, just for the purpose of the public hearing. This is an ordinance amendment for our zoning ordinance related to airport height, um, and our airport zones. All this change, basically, the, the ordinance already exists with the changes. There are no new regulations. They're all mainly clerical or clarification changes, changes, um, that were requested by our local airport, for FAA rules to comply with some changes and, and updates to those. And then also to update to comply with the latest, um, Air Force Base land use plan that was done. So there's no new real regulation here, no new regulation, um, in terms of height, um, in terms of noise. That type of thing is all clerical. One example is, um, the, the main, um, change is going to be in the ordinance. You'll see where our, our airport, the jet port, has been separated out from the other airports in the county. Um, kind of in their own section with their heights, um, they requested that. They requested a little bit different things than our Air Force Base does, and we didn't want to complicate things and try to change too much with the Air Force Base, so we did separate them out. However, the verbiage there with our airport, with their terms of the height zones, is still the same as what it was before. It's just separated out and worded based on FAA standards, um, new standards. Uh, but the heights don't change, the regulation doesn't change. Um, they just wanted that to show the FAA, uh, that they had complied with those, those changes. One example of the change is, um, if you look, if you see in the ordinance, the Air Force Base has an inner horizontal zone and an outer horizontal zone. However, our airport, instead of having two separate zones as they did before, now has one horizontal zone. So it's changes like that, but it all does the same thing. There's no change in that. But it looks like a lot in this ordinance, and it is, there are a lot of changes, but in terms of regulation, there's nothing new. There are, uh, most of it's tables, they're in the back of the ordinance. Uh, we already have those tables in place that, um, talk about the, um, Air Force Base in terms of the accident potential zones and what uses are allowable and not allowable in those areas. And then also the noise zones and what uses are allowed and not allowed in those areas as well. We already have a table with those. What this new table does is basically it just expands the uses. That table was shortened uses and there's so many more uses that are, um, in place, um, that are proposed nowadays, that when that was first done, didn't consider it. So it's basically just expands that table, uh, but there's no new regulation there, as I said. So, um, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have anything specific.
Any questions?
Did you advertise?
We did, yes, sir.
Do you have any, um, input from any of the citizens?
We have not.
No comment?
No comment, yes, sir.
Okay, the board.
I have one question. Did you, uh, this was sent to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base for base review?
It was, yes. We sent it to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Um, their engineer has reviewed it and has sent back that, um, they have no concerns with the changes. We also made sure, which it was requested, just part of our, um, airport was requested by our airport, um, and their engineer as well, W.K. Dixon. Anyway, they've reviewed it and, um, are good with their part of it as well, so.
All right, the board may to choose to take action on this public hearing if so wish.
I so move.
Motion on the floor.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, close it.
Okay.
We now close.
Did we have anybody to speak? Yeah, we need to ask if there was anybody here to speak on it.
There was, no one.
Nobody signed up, okay.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Will we entertain a motion if to choose to take action?
I make a motion to move forward on this action.
Yes. All righty, moving along. Moving along now, we'll look for, uh, approval of our consent agenda. Madam Chair, I move that, uh, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
All righty, moving along to new business. Uh, would be motion, uh, it'll be number 16, motion to approve naming of the roads within Wayne County Business Campus to Industry Avenue and Ray Mayo Way. And I think, uh, Mr. Mignolet will be speaking on that.
Do you have that map, Carol?
Do you have that map, Karen? That should be, that's it. So this is a, a map of our, Phase One of our uh business campus on Pate Town Road. W C D A was under an option to purchase this, which was subsequently assigned to the county and we now own it. It's been developed, uh we're in the final stages of uh finalizing the plaque to be recorded. Um I was working with their surveyor when we did. The preliminary um plan had two names, Industry Avenue and then uh Ray Mayo Way, which W C D A named both of those and Ray Mayo Way was named after the late Commissioner Ray Mayo, who worked with W C D A on a number of existing industry projects. So before the, that was a preliminary suggestion by W C D A, but it has never been formally adopted uh by this board since you are the owners. So before we get that final survey um recorded and completed, um I wanted to bring that to you to get formal approval of those two names. And these will be DOT roads, um they will be turned over petition to DOT to be taken over by DOT and maintained by DOT.
Madam Chair, I make a motion with you on that.
Got a motion on the floor? More comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, do have a comment on that. It's very fitting that uh, that one of our streets here be named for former Commissioner Ray Mayo. He worked diligently with W C D A and basically owned this project as such. So I think it's a great way to honor former Commissioner Ray Mayo.
Just to, just to follow up on that, I was uh. Sitting last night and I, I, I don't do a whole lot of Facebook stuff, just once in a while, when I'm bored, I look at it. But mine popped up last, uh last night, five years ago, uh when we had the ribbon cutting out at uh auto owners insurance or whatever. Ray's picture was popped up on it and it was, you know, it, it uh. I think this is very fitting to name, name the road after him. I mean, and the day that he passed away, we uh, we swapped back emails. Some were around lunchtime, twelve, twelve thirty, and at seven o'clock, he was gone. I mean, it's uh, Ray was a good man.
I agree. I served with him on the GWTA board and it was nice to serve with him on that board.
Do we vote?
We voted.
We voted.
Yeah, y'all already voted. All righty, moving along, there's no other comments on that. Uh the number seventeen is a resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven in support of establishing a public defender's office in Wayne County, North Carolina. And I think Commissioner Williams would like to read that.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven, uh resolution in support of establishing a public defender's office in Wayne County, North Carolina. Whereas the Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution guarantees the right to legal representation for individuals accused of crimes who cannot afford an attorney. And whereas Wayne County currently provides indigent defense services through the assignment of private attorneys under the supervision of indigent, indigent defense services, systems. And whereas the establishment of a dedicated public defender's office in Wayne County could enhance the quality and consistency of legal representation for indigent defendants, ensure more efficient use for resources and uphold the principles of justice and fairness. And whereas several counties in North Carolina have successfully implemented public defender's offices, resulting in improved legal outcomes and cost efficiencies. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners is committed to exploring avenues that strengthen the county's criminal justice system and better serve its residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby express the support for the establishment of a public defender's office in Wayne County and commits to advocating for necessary funding engaging stakeholders adopted this eighteenth day of February twenty twenty-five by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, Barbara Acock Chairwoman and Wayne County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. And I, that's in a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven.
Oh, okay. If I may comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this board, for quite some time, we've been discussing this. And I think it's just gonna help our citizens, it's gonna help um our legal field here that have to have so, so much backup. I think we've all experienced someone being incarcerated. I know that there's been times when I've even had to experience being incarcerated. And it's, it's, it's gotta be hard on someone who can't afford an attorney. And they have to, you know, just wait it out. And you know, we've had people sit in our facility for over seven years at one point. And I know that, you know, that is not a speedy travel. That is not fear. So I thank this board for, for, for um supporting this resolution. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to county managers report. And I'd just like to thank Jay's Kitchen for sponsoring our uh employee spotlight. That's a very nice award, it's very nice of them, it's uh great for them to partner with it. Congratulate all of our employees on their uh pins uh for service. Especially appreciate Mr. Parker's service, those numbers that were read were incredible. And uh really amazing to me, so thank you to him. I've always enjoyed working with him. And he's not going far, so we know where he's at. I just appreciate him. And that's all I have in the county manager's report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we, Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. Yeah, um I had the opportunity on Sunday, I got invited to a Black History event at um Woods Chapel Church. Pastor Leo Deans um is the pastor there. Also, we had our councilman, um uh White, he was there, he spoke as well, we were both speakers. It was amazing. Love to go back and visit that church again, it was, it was just wonderful. They fed us, food was excellent. I want to thank again everyone, uh we had our goals and budget retreat and it was a wonderful retreat. We advocated for a lot of things, um hopefully we'll see those things come um to fruition. I want to congratulate Attorney Borden Parker. I know it's very emotional, just transitioning into a new state. I saw it in your eyes when they were reading the plaque to you. You know, just, you know, I didn't realize you were here fifty years. And that is amazing, but the best is yet to come. You know, so um thank you for your service. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, I'm sorry, and remember it's Black History Month. If you get a chance to research, I had a lot of, I, I've learned a lot about how our Black Americans contributed to this country. Some of the most important inventions were invented by Black people. You'd be surprised, and us as an agriculture community, you'd be surprised some of the things that were created that helps us. Thank you.
Mr. Drucker?
Fifty years? I had no idea. I knew you'd been around a long time, but not that long. Kind of coordinates with my, um my marriage of fifty years. But Borden, you have been a very instrumental in a lot of things, uh and a lot of goals that I had and helped me and others on this board get our goals accomplished. And I sincerely appreciate it and I know you look forward to being more of a some salt air. So enjoy vacation, I mean your, your retirement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Drucker?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to uh thank Mr. Parker for his fifty year service. And uh I've known him for fifty years, so I guess I don't, don't do the math now, but I've known, I've known him for fifty years. Knew his dad and his uncle. In fact, uh they, they, they probably kept me out of trouble a time or two, but they uh. But thank you for what you've done for Wayne County, thank you for what your family has done for Wayne County. It, 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 it means a lot, you know. And one thing I can say, you know, sometimes we asked him a question and he doesn't answer it like we want it answered, but he answers it like, like it needs to be answered, so. But again, Mr. Parker, thank you. And also, uh I want to continue to remember Commissioner Gurley's family in the loss of, of uh him and his sister's uh father. Mr. Edgar was a well-known man in the, in the eastern North Carolina because he was probably one of the, the last men that ever worked on sewing machines. But he uh, he had a, a good career and, and I didn't realize until last night when Chris was making some statements that uh, you know, used to, we had home egg departments in the older schools and he worked on the sewing machines in all of the surrounding counties, all the way down to Craving County. Keeping the sewing machines going, but and, and you know, I didn't know Mr. Edgar as good as I do some people, but he was a fine, outstanding man. And uh, and as, as Chris said last night, uh Chris and his sister are adopted. And he said, you know, he uh, we didn't choose our parents, our parents chose us. Actually saw Chris get choked up a little bit last night and normally he's pretty strong, but he uh, he, he did a fantastic job last night. And uh also, uh tonight, uh the annual uh Wayne County Firefighters Association banquet is being held at Lane Tree. It was scheduled for January and we had to, they had to move it and postpone it because of bad weather. And we're gonna try to buy, dodge it one day this time, so. But uh any, any of y'all are invited to go. It's, it's uh, it's the only, the only event that the, that the association actually spends a little bit of money on. But uh they will uh hand out the retirement checks tonight and uh I do not know who's on the program. But uh y'all are invited if you'd like to come.
Uh, what time?
Seven o'clock at Lane Tree. And uh, right now, it's a lame thing called Madam Chair.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, first I'd like to thank Mr. Borden for everything he's done since I've been here and over the fifty years. Whenever I get a little tied up on something here, I'm over here to decide after the meeting and give me a little pointer or two of what I needed to do or something that I should look into or something like that. And I appreciate that because I've never had that, anyone help me in that way. So thank you for being that, that person, you know. I've never heard a bad word about you, so that just means that you're an honorable man and, and that you've done great work here in Wayne County. And we thank you for that. My condolences to the Gurley family as well. You know, we all knew Chris' father was battling some things, but you know, just found out today myself that, you know, he had passed away. So definitely my condolences to them. And um last but not least, uh I was very disappointed in our audit last week. You know, over the, over the past couple of years, I've asked a lot of questions concerning budgets and financing and, and profits, losses, you know, and, you know, from one year to the next, from twenty twenty-three, I went back and looked at my book to twenty twenty-four. The numbers are almost the same, but miraculously somehow we made one point nine million in, in, in our uh franchise, franchise apartments, enterprise apartments versus losing money in the past years, you know, versus not being able to use grant money as profit to being able to use grant money as profit. I, I didn't quite understand all of that, so I was really, really, really disappointed in that and I hope to, to get some more answers concerning that. But outside of that, we also have a, um it is Black History Month. We have a Black History Parade this Saturday in Mont Olive, if you can attend, please attend, I think it starts at one o'clock. It was a lovely event last year, so I'll definitely be there myself and just thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, um Madam Chair, just a few things. I did have an opportunity to attend the ECC Executive Board Meeting in New Bern last week and that was a, a good meeting, learned some more things there as I'm still kind of getting my feet wet on the board. As a couple of us have echoed again, remembering Chris's family and him with the loss of his dad today and keeping them in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Borden. I'd love to say a little bit more to you than just thank you, because in the little bit of time that I have known you and the, the showing that you had today and just the facts. Thank you from me is probably really not even, you know, even gonna get it as a pat on the back. And sometimes in, in my life, when I think about trying to find people that have a little bit of wisdom in them, I think about a shade tree. And I know that sounds kind of silly, but you know, when I was younger, I was always looking for a shade tree. And in my life, they were usually older adults or people that had some wisdom or helped kind of shelter me, you know, in, in different times in my life. And now I look at you and it's very obvious that you have become that shade tree that is full of wisdom that obviously we're gonna miss in Wayne County, your wisdom, your service that you've done and all of these individuals and the facts that were read today that you provided shade to in life to, to help them along the way. So I think it's very evident in my little brief statement that I have an opportunity to say thank you is you've planted a lot of seeds that will re-weak, will benefit or re-reap reward, if I can say it properly, that you'll never know or that we'll never know. And one day I know you're gonna hear, well done my good and faithful servant, and I appreciate you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could I have just another minute?
Yes, please.
Uh, also, pretending, getting back to Mr. Parker's award. I, I don't know who picked Kim to present it to him, but that was the perfect person to present it to him because that lady in her department, they see things that, that Mr. Parker has, has helped with far as children and, and, and uh disabled people. They uh, that's, that's probably one of the toughest jobs in the county. And uh, and Kim does a fantastic job, but I just, whoever, whoever chose her to present that award. Thank you, Jen. But that was, that was the perfect person to present that award. And, and also, uh Commissioner Foster and, and uh Mr. Williams has mentioned Black History Month. I was thumbing through my phone the other day and uh it, it, there's some things came up on it that uh, that the minorities have contributed over the last hundred and fifty, two hundred years to, to this country. And one that really caught me off guard was, when y'all leave today, when you get to the first stoplight, let, remember, a minority come up with a, the stoplight system in Chicago. I think it was one of the flags back then, but, but you know, uh they're, you know, the minorities has contributed a lot more than what some people realize. But they're, you know, I look up at a stoplight once in a while and that, and that, that'll come to mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Oh.
Every, anytime you grab your doorknob, you think, think of a Black man.
Miss, uh, Miss.
Got a lot of history to be proud of.
Yes, yes.
And one more thing I'd like to say. Mr. Borden, um for those that've been here for a while, we can all say that you give the best Christmas gift. The history of Christmas gift, you're, I mean, style, class, just impeccable. So as I say this, I'm gonna look over here to our left. Andrew, you have very, very stiff competition now moving forward. Now, hey, it is, make sure you get his connections and everything to find out, but that's it, but thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, one more thing, I'm have, I'm have to uh also state, I didn't know about the chocolate, but I know about the cheese.
Yep, still using it.
Yes.
Very good, too. Ms. Parker, everything has just been said. Ms. Parker, everything has just been said wonderfully about you, and I like the shade tree because you are full of wisdom. That is something that you have earned, you know, by years of being here for fifty years, you know? 'Cause I'm a lot smarter than I was twenty-five years ago. It kinda goes with age, you know, wisdom, but we do appreciate your wisdom and what you've done for the families that you've done for. And also, it was great to see all the pins given out to the employees. That says a lot for Wayne County, that we have employees that are willing to stay here and work with us all those years, you know, because of the turnovers in so many places that we have now. And we're talking about twenty-five and ten and fifteen years. A lot of companies can't even say that they can keep employees that long. And I want to say thank you to our employees for staying here with us, too. And also, Commissioner Gurley's family, you know, we're, hopefully, we can all keep them in our prayers because it is a tough time, even though sometimes we say, well, it's better for them. We still, it's still hard to let go. And that's all I have, Commissioner Crumpler, and so I guess we're gonna recess.
Recession until twelve P M.
Yeah.
The Farm Bureau luncheon at the Maxwell Center.
And thank you, thank you, Borden.